Good evening. Our February 27, 2020 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, invocation and pledge will be led by Caitlin Fabre and Shayna Stevenson. Caitlin and Shayna are both freshmen in high school and senior-level Girl Scouts. Shayna attends Longview High School and she is doing college dual-credit and is very active in her church. Caitlin is homeschooled and is the vice president for her homeschool anchor club. Both girls have earned over ten badges this year alone, and they've been here before with us. Thank you, girls, for returning. Please stand.
Father, Father, as we meet here today, we come before you with grateful hearts for the many blessings that you have granted us. In return, we offer our humble services to you and others. We also ask that during this meeting, that you help the city council members and attendees use their skills and judgment to gain a widened outlook and a clearing vision of all that lies before them as they make decisions concerning our community. Help them to act in accordance with what is best for our citizens. Lastly, may we go forth and strengthen in our mission to spread human kindness. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight. We sure do appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Tonight, in employee recognition, we're recognizing our Coalition for Drug-Free Youth. February 27, 2020. Tonight, we are recognizing a successful, multi-departmental partnership that supports the mission of our Coalition for Drug-Free Youth. In 2015, Partners in Prevention partnered with the Longview Police Department to place a prescription drug box, drug drop box, in the police department lobby. While the critical aim is to collect unwanted opioids, any unwanted medications are acceptable. This proactive approach to preventing drug overdose deaths is enhanced by our coalition being involved in the national campaign called Lock Your Meds. Since the inception of the drug box drop, 4,298 pounds of medication have been properly disposed of. This is more than two tons. In 2018, the collaboration grew to include the Longview Fire Department. A syringe drop box is installed in the lobby of our fire administration building, and DeTara pouches are available to the public. DeTara pouches allow for safe-at-home medication disposal. To date, forty pounds of syringes have been collected and 2,500 DeTara pouches have been distributed. These initiatives have greatly added benefits of keeping these items out of our water supply and our landfill. The drop box and disposal pouches have been purchased with grant funds and the services provided free of charge to Longview citizens. With Whitney Pierce and Holly Fuller with Partners in Prevention, Ms. Yurin and Mara Valiella with the Longview Police Department, and Wes Teague with the Longview Fire Department, please come forward. Okay, you know, what a significant and innovative approach to something that we just take for granted is how to dispose of medications. And, you know, in the past, that has led to many, many, many drug overdoses and even deaths. And so, this approach is innovative, it's creative, and it's easy, and it really benefits our community. And so, you know, when you look at the quantity and the volume that we're able to dispose of properly, that's a huge benefit for the citizens of Longview. So, I really appreciate you all and the efforts that y'all put out. You know, everything like this that we do in Longview makes Longview a better place to live. So, you guys are just, y'all are awesome. Keep up that good work and doing things that help Longviewites become better Longview citizens. Thank y'all so much. Y'all are the best. Appreciate you very much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you so much. Sorry about that. I know, I'm very good. I'm just gonna stay up here for our community recognition tonight. Tonight, I want to recognize an individual who thinks he's here for the foundation. Brad would not do the foundation, sorry, buddy. Come on up, Brad Tidwell. He thinks he's here to honor the foundation, but he's not. This is Brad Tidwell with Vera Bank. Round of applause, please. Brad and Vera Bank are responsible for one of the most significant things in our community that's happened in a long, long time. And these beautiful flags that you all place at the top of your building, Brad, have symbolized Longview, and it gives us such pleasure to see those flags flying every single day. And I know, you know, this was totally, the city had nothing to do with this. This is 100% Brad Tidwell and Vera Bank. And you guys should be commended for this. You have made Longview a landmark with this. And I was there at the unveiling, and I was overwhelmed. And when I drive by and I see it from such a distance, it's incredible to think that that's Longview, and that's gonna be a symbol of Longview for years to come. And you guys are awesome. You're awesome. I've known Brad, we grew up together. This is the kind of guy that I want, working for Longview every single day. He's amazing, the things that you do are fantastic. Keep up the good work, my friend. I appreciate you so much. And thanks to Vera Bank. Y'all are awesome. Thank you, buddy. Who doesn't love those flags up there? Those are awesome and much. We're at the citizen comment. I had no speaker cards. Anyone like to speak and fill out a card later? Excellent. Presentation items. We have a presentation of proclamation designated February 27 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Day. Megan Johnson, Outreach Coordinator, and Sarah Shelton, Director of Programs and Services with the Women's Center of East Texas, will be here to accept this. Please come forward. I could've stayed up there a bit. How are you ladies tonight? Come on up. Hi, Megan. Good to see you. How are you? Good to see y'all. Okay, Teen Dating Violence Awareness Day, February 27, 2020. Whereas the Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor, by proclamation, recognize February 27, 2020 as the Teen Dating Violence Awareness Day in the City of Longview, and in one in three adolescents in the U.S. is a victim of physical, sexual, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds other types of youth violence. Teen dating violence is not acceptable, and everyone has the right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. So, I therefore, Andy Mack, with authority vested me as mayor of the City of Longview, proclaim February 27 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Day in Longview. Okay, that's a lot to spit out there. But what this means is, our kids deserve better than this, and they deserve a chance to go out and have normal lives without having to go through this type of, these issues that they face every single day. So, thank you all for bringing this to the forefront, and I'd just be aware of this, because when we are aware of it, it's Awareness Day. When we're aware of problems, then we can start to solve problems. And y'all keep up the good work, because I'm telling you, I wouldn't want to be a teen in today's world. I wouldn't have made it. I had enough problems when I was a teenager. Now, today, they face so many other challenges and so many other things that just draw them away from that center point, and you all are trying to draw them back. So, thank you so much. Y'all are awesome. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all. Thank you so much. Thank you all. We will now have a presentation by Dr. Wayne Guidry, Superintendent of Spring Hill ISD to the City of Longview for the Sesquicentennial Capsule. Mr. Wright, join me at plan, please.
If I could have one second.
You just go right ahead, sir.
When I first arrived in Longview, you know, I made a point that I was gonna come to a city council meeting just to express how impressed my family and I were with the city. As a former city council member, you know, I fought for years for the type of planning and forethought that the leaders of Longview have put into the city. And it doesn't take long, when you arrive in Longview, to see just the forethought that has went into the city over the decades. And anyway, we've just been thoroughly impressed with the city, the quality of people that you have in this community, have just overwhelmed us. So, anyway, I just wanted to commend y'all for the great job that y'all have done with the city. Again, me and my family are thrilled to be residents of Longview and look forward to many more years. As superintendent of Spring Hill ISD, you know, one thing I talked a lot about this last year is how do we work with the city, you know, for a win-win relationship, where our kids win as graduates, and then where our city wins, you know, from what we've produced. And that's just one thing we're committed to as a school district of Longview, is that we're able to create programs that feed right into the economy of Longview and make Longview a great city for the next 150 years. And so, we're committed to the city, you know, with our kids and with our programs. And again, I just want to appreciate, thank you for your leadership and to the place you brought Longview at this point. So, anyway, for the time capsule, I am thrilled to present our Panther football helmet, and again, just thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Hey, you, sir. How cool is that for time capsule? Pretty neat, huh?
Thank you.
We'll proudly display it at the time capsule. Make the circle, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Will you wear this for the rest of the night now?
Thank you.
Come on, Dave.
Yeah, I've got a big head, I don't think it fits.
We're now at the public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. This last Thursday, we had the opportunity to graduate three of our newest recruits from the East Texas Police Academy over at Kilgore College. They were pictured left to right here is Jalen Thornton, Blake Dickerson, who was also the class valedictorian for their academy class, and Kyle Tucker. They graduated from the academy last Thursday. This Monday, they took the state exam. All three of them passed the state exam, which is not an easy exam to pass. And today, we had the opportunity to commission these officers over at the police department. They'll have a few more days of in-class training, and then we'll get them out into the field training program and get them trained up so that we can have three more additional officers out on the street. Also, this month, we had a retirement. Officer Kristy Bryan retired with the police department after 16 years serving with us, but she had 24 total years in the law enforcement profession, and she chose to seek a business opportunity that came her way and wanted to take advantage of that. But she served as our Public Information Officer and our social media development for the last several years, and I just want to publicly thank Kristy for everything that she's done, not only for this police department, but for the community as well. We also had another retirement. We had to retire one of our K-9 officers as well this month. K-9 Bajeris retired after seven years of service to the city. He served from May of 2013 to February of 2020. So, he's living the life of leisure right now, and I want to thank Sergeant Nikki Casson, who was the K-9 handler, for the time and effort that she put in, caring for our K-9 and being a handler and making sure that the dog was always ready to be out there to assist our officers. We have our Citizens Police Academy coming up. This is a free academy for our citizens to come learn a little bit more about the police department and how we operate. If we have anybody that's interested in attending, we'd love to have you. For an application, you can go to longviewtexas.gov/cpa. We meet on Tuesday and Thursday nights, beginning March 17, from about 6:15 to 8 o'clock. Sometimes, there's a lot of questions and we run over a little bit, but we try to have everybody out by eight. Anybody that's interested, please get an application and fill it out. We'd love to have you. Also, I know the fire chief has talked about this, and we're gonna tag team so we can get the message out to as many people as we can about Smart 911, the city's new emergency notification system. Want to encourage everybody to take advantage of this and go to longviewtexas.gov alerts and register to get these important emergency alerts from the city. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Chief Bishop?
Chief, I have one thing. I was glad to see that you had a woman as a K-9 handler. My oldest granddaughter told me this weekend that that's what she wants to do when she has a real job.
Yeah, I'll tell her, come see. We'll get her hooked up.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, thank you.
Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to give you some updates about what the fire department's been, or had going on in the last couple of weeks since we last met. First and foremost, we've had the opportunity to appoint a new person as our EMS Operations Officer. Wes Teague will be taking, has taken over that role from Captain Ross Dyer. Captain Dyer is not leaving the department, he's transferring. He's done his stint in admin and administrative assignment, and he's transferring back out to the field, back out into operation. So, we're happy to have Wes on board with us in administration, and we look forward to many great things in him helping advance our EMS service here in Longview. Stop the Bleed Training. This has been running hot and heavy since the first of the year. One of our most recent opportunities was to share that information and that knowledge and those skills with a group of local Girl Scouts. Scout troop number 6716 took the opportunity recently to get some training in with Chief Dodgin to practice some of those skills. I hope they earned a merit badge along with that. But they were really excited about it, had a lot of fun. They said they didn't get pictures of it, but some of the more cooler shots, what they saw in there was when they were sticking bandages in the wounds. They had that old girly squeamish look on their face, and I wish they would've caught a picture of that, because I would've put it up there. But everybody had a good time, they walked out of there with some exceptional knowledge, and we appreciate their participation. New fire apprentice training. I've mentioned recently that we brought on three new fire apprentices. This is just the first step of several more that will come. You may see these fire apprentices out around town as they're getting acclimated to Longview, they're learning our facilities, they're learning our equipment, our processes. And we couldn't do this without partners here in town like the Holiday Inn Express South and the Green Tree Inn and Suites out on the south side of town. They allowed these apprentices to come out and do some elevator rescue training in their facilities, training of how to use the firefighter service on the elevators, so forth and so on. So, we're very dependent on our local partners, our stakeholders out in the community, to allow us to come out and get this type of hands-on training. So, we appreciate them. Emergency management lecture. Man, I had fun today. I spent all morning in the EOC with a group of nursing students from UT Tyler Longview Center. These are second-year nursing students. Part of their curriculum is, they have to understand how emergency management works, why it's critical to their role in the healthcare profession. And there is a particular specialized area with hospital emergency management, but there's also a lot of connectivity to how that relates to overall city and county emergency management. So, I spent about three hours up there indoctrinating them on how emergency management works here. We have a very specialized or a very high degree of emergency management here in Longview. We cooperate in that responsibility with Gregg County. That's because of the leadership of Mayor Mack and Judge Stout. I'm telling you, it is the best way to be prepared for those bad days that lay out there in front of us, and we're glad to share and educate them on how we manage that aspect of emergency management here in Longview and Gregg County. We do it together. It affects all of us. And I'll reiterate what Chief Bishop said, now is the opportunity to get registered for the Smart 911 program. Whether you do the app, it doesn't matter. Just make sure that you have your information in there. We're facing the potential for some severe weather early next week. Be a good opportunity to get your stuff entered and make sure that it's gonna work for you if that bad day happens earlier next week. So, keep your eye on the weather and get registered for the Smart 911 program. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Chief Stillman? Chief, I had that girly squeamish look on my face every day when I'm doing it. So, don't make fun of that, okay? It's part of it.
I get it.
Okay. Thank you, buddy. Thank you, chief. We're now at a consent agenda. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
I have a question on C.
Yes, sir.
Is the...
Mr. Lewis, question on item C.
Me. Are the funds from this coming from the federal government?
Eighty percent of the funding.
Eighty percent of them, okay. I wouldn't watch, sure, but sure, okay. That's the question I had.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on consent agenda?
No, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now to election item. Consider an ordinance canceling the election to fill the expired term for City Council, District Four, and declaring elected to office of unopposed candidate for a term expiring in May 2023.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and Mr. Bonds. I have certified that we have an unopposed candidate for District Four, Ms. Kristin Ishihara. So, we're requesting approval of an ordinance confirming she is unopposed, declaring Kristin Ishihara as our council member for District Four through May 2023, and canceling the general election that was scheduled for May 2.
I have received this information and have approved it. Is there...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. We're now to action item. Consider a resolution adopting and reconfirming tax abatement guidelines and criteria. Mr. Wright.
Mayor and council, this item is the readoption of our tax abatement guidelines. Those guidelines are required to be in place before you can offer any sort of tax abatement. However, they expire automatically every two years, and it has been two years since these were last approved by the council. So, we would request that you consider approving these for another two years.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Mr. Wright, or anyone have comments on this issue?
We've changed nothing. We have not changed anything.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. There are motions.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Consider a resolution authorizing the city staff to acquire a fee simple title to certain property dedicated as LT 36A. Mr. McPhee.
Mayor, city council, Mr. Bonds, I have a piece of the police department property that's required to construct the police department. That was approved in the bond election recently. The particular tract that we are discussing is parcel number 28. It is located off of 500 Pearl Street. It's about .1 acres of land. It's a landlocked piece of property. At first, there was some, a little bit of trouble that we had finding out who owned the property owner. Once we found out who owned the property, we got with that property owner and brought forward the appraised value of that property, which was $1,600 based on appraisal by a certified appraisal. The property owner did not agree to that price. He informed us that he wanted $15,000 for that. That was outside of my authority. We negotiated and tried to settle a negotiation prior to coming to you to request eminent domain with that property owner for a settlement fee. That was also rejected. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there aren't any, I have something I'd like to ask you to do.
Any question, Mr. McPhee, on this subject? Yes, sir. What would you like of us?
I'd like you to ask that you make and approve the following motion. I move that the City of Longview authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the fee simple title to a certain property in the Hamilton McNutt survey, A-129, City of Longview, Gregg County, Texas. Said property consisting of approximately 0.10 acres, parcel 2019P-028, the same also being known as all of Lot 36A, NCB 223, Longview McNutt acreage. Said parcel being all of that certain tract conveyed to Emanuel Lilly by an instrument recorded under Gregg County Clerk's file number 201020951, the official public records of Gregg County, Texas. Said parcel being more particularly described in Attachment A of the resolution before you tonight for the purpose of constructing the new police department.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McPhee. We're now out of the community interest. Mr. Moore, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a photograph of me that the Junior League was kind enough to put up for the Sesquicentennial Ball, and ever since then, I've been trying to figure out what to do with it. So, I have come to the conclusion that I'm going to turn it over to our city secretary, Andrew Shepherd. And any meeting that I am not able to make, I would ask her to place it in my chair so that you all know that I'm watching you and I'm with you in spirit. So, thank you, Mayor, for this time.
And it's a great picture, too, Ed.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, just leave it there and watch it go in the other room. We're good with that. I like it. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Miss Notting. Nothing tonight, man. Mr. Wayne.
I just want to acknowledge, before the meeting tonight, I met four young men from Luton University. I was very impressed with meeting. If you guys don't mind standing up and giving a wave to the council. Welcome to the council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara.
I have a couple of slides. Strut Your Mutt is coming up on Saturday, March 28. This is the primary or biggest fundraiser for the shelter. It's put on by Longview Paws, and all proceeds from that benefit animals at our shelter. It's a great, fun day from 9:30 to 11:00. If you have a dog, bring your animal, and you're welcome to participate in the walk or just in some of the fun activities. Usually, they have a K-9 demonstration from our K-9. It's part of the police force, but come on out and help support our animal shelter. If you follow them on Facebook, you saw that we took in 60 animals in the last two days, so we could also use your help in finding those adoptable animals new homes to go home with. So, come on out and help us. I have one more. Yep. As part of the Sesquicentennial, I am taking over Ed's position here to announce those. This is the Passport Program that will start over spring break for children in our community. A great opportunity to go visit. You see where the train for the Passport Program will go to all these wonderful locations so that our young folks can learn about the great things we have in Longview. It'll be a really fun opportunity, so if you're here for spring break, make sure that you and your family participate. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wright.
Several of us were at the Sesquicentennial Ball this past Saturday night, and I just want to congratulate the Junior League on a great job they did. They did a really fantastic job putting that thing together, so I just wanted to thank them.
And the City of Longview, thank you for the City of Longview employees and Laura that coordinated that along with the Junior League. Y'all did a marvelous job. Mr. Pertle.
Yes, I'm here to finally announce another town hall meeting. I don't have very many, but I've got a couple of issues in my district that I wanted to address with the constituents there and anybody else that wanted to come. So, it will be at the First Church of Nazarene over on HG Mosley, where I've had the others before, and it'll be Monday, March 23, at 6:00. So, I'm inviting anybody and everybody to come.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bonds. Well, the last submitted essay in Johnny Casey's Essay Contest is Friday, February 28, which is tomorrow. Get your essays in, and you might be the winner. Spring Break at the Longview Public Library is March 9 to the 13th. The Census Pep Rally is Thursday, March 26. We have upcoming events. The Zonta Club of Longview's Prom Dress Boutique, Saturday, February 29. Big Tex and Little Big Tex 2020, Saturday, February 29, and Grass Roots at the Green, Friday, March 20. More information about these events, go to longviewtexas.gov/calendar or visit longviewtexas.com/events. Survey. Have any of you seen photos or videos of the recently renovated petroleum building downtown now named Alton Plaza? Well, if you haven't, we'll tell you the answers in a minute. Can we show the videos? Look at these. I mean, if you haven't seen these or been by to look at it, it is amazing what they have done downtown in that once monstrous eyesore that we call the Petroleum Building. So, I'm really pleased with what I see. The grand opening is here coming up next month, and I'm looking forward to that. So, the survey answers are yes, 59%, and 41% said no. But now, if you haven't, look at these and see how really progressive that place is gonna be. It really is a neat-looking building, and I'm excited about the opportunities it presents for downtown Longview. I think it's gonna be a huge stimulus for downtown Longview, and I'm glad that we were a part of making this happen. So, thank you very much. Second question. It's officially crawfish season. Do you have any plans to attend to crawfish boil? My goodness, 59% said no? Holy moly. Do you not like crawfish? It's my favorite time of the year. I absolutely love it. love it. There's a number of them out there, too. The Mud Bugs and Music is put on by the Arch of Gregg County, and then the Harvest Festival Crawfish Boil put on by the Harvest Festival. Both those are wonderful events to attend. They also benefit great causes here in our community. So, if you don't have plans to attend one, try to attend. They're great, lots of fun, tons of people there, plus the food is just fantastic. So, I'm thrilled that crawfish season is here. That means spring is just around the corner. So, thank you for all that participated in that survey. Scholarship. Four $2,000 scholarships are being presented. Your essays must be in by April 1. We will announce the winners the first meeting in May. Graduating senior from either Longview, Halsville, Pontchar, or Spring Hill, this is a great opportunity to get some college tuition money. And it's just a simple essay of, if you were the mayor, what would your priority be? Because I'm curious to see where our young people see the future of our community going, and I hope we have some, we always have fantastic essays. I look forward to reading them because it blows me away when I see what wonderful young students we have with wonderful ideas for our community. So, I'm excited about that. Please try to do that, and I look forward to seeing those in the coming, coming days. With that, I guess we are now adjourned. Thank you for attending.